...September 11. The reason is that we decided a site book would help us consider the application. The members who are here tonight are basically the same ones who were here last time. Steve Beveridge, Matt Dean, John French, Jim Mays, and Deb Chapman. A reminder, we've already established that the applicant has standing because of the deed and the agent authorization, correct? Everyone remembers. We heard the planner's explanation of why it's before the board, and we also accepted for the record the planner's 9/11 memo and the applicant's packet dated August 19. I'm looking around for members of the public. Not seeing any yet. I believe at this point it's time to have the applicant make a presentation, go through the application with us.
Do I need to come up to the...
Sure, if you want.
It'll probably be recorded.
Does he need to say who he is?
We need this for perpetuity.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who are you?
And why are you here? Some days it's a good question, right? All right, good evening. I'm Will Gartley with Gartley and Dorsky, representing Elizabeth Semermeier on her request to remove two existing buildings and replace it with a new cottage that is further from the lake and with no expansion, actually less footprint than the two existing buildings that are there. There's going to be a new septic system and a new drainage pipe that picks up water that comes from a culvert that crosses Beauclair, which is a town crossing. And our contention is that we move this back to the greatest practical extent. We have neighboring wells, our well, that limit where the septic system can go, and so we've slid it back towards that septic system to make sure that the entire structure is outside the 25-foot setback, which there is a little bit of it within the 25-foot setback now, and then leave enough room to have the four-to-one side slopes off the septic system and a little bit of a swale to push water to either side of the building.
That it?
That's kind of a summary.
Okay.
We've gone through the ordinance and provided kind of an explanation of how we think we've met the criteria that are required for moving it back to the greatest practical extent. Can I answer any questions?
Okay.
Joe Rossillo, who's the architect, is here with me, so if there's building questions, he can answer those.
Okay. Questions from the board? John?
Well, I will say this. I had concerns before we did the site walk, if I may say that, and then a lot of my answers to my questions were answered once I saw the lot. My real concern is that ditch from the town. Are they going to engineer something for you, or are they just going to half-assedly let something flow down through there?
No, well, so what we've done is, I mean, their pipe, excuse me, outlets just onto the property. So you can see on our plan, we show the end of the pipe, and it's just a couple feet into the property, and there's a pretty good-sized little bit of a gully there, drainage way. And so we're putting in a pipe where there used to be a pipe inlet. We're building a little bit of a head wall with some stones and putting in a new pipe that'll take it down to the lake, so stop it from, you know, going out of the...
So it'll be all new pipe, excuse me, it'll be all new pipe from the road all the way to the lake now?
Nope. There's about a, there's going to be about a 30, no, 40-foot open swale from the culvert that crosses Beauclair to where our culvert starts.
So there'll be some drainage onto the line?
Yes.
Hi.
Go ahead.
I have a few HHE 200 questions with the design in this.
Okay.
Do that now?
Sure.
Okay, so on the site plan, C1, it says, "Proposed septic pretreatment." The HHE doesn't have pretreatment check. I'm just, are we doing 1,000-gallon regular with a pump, or are we doing pretreatment?
No, I'm pretty sure that there was pretreatment there.
Okay, so that's not selected on the form here. He didn't select shoreline zoning for some reason, but on the variance request, it has, from the neighbor's well, they're asking for 63 feet for variance, but the site plan says 60.5, so if they got a 63-foot variance, it wouldn't even be enough distance to cover the neighbor's well. It's two and a half feet off.
Yep.
And then I don't see Tommy Jackson's well anywhere, even if it's over 100.
On our plan or on the...
On any of these plans, or the HHE 200.
Yep. He actually has drilled a new well since we did any of this work. It's something that he just did.
So we don't know what his is within 100 either?
Right, right. So the HHE is going to have to be updated, because he staked this out, then we actually measured it more accurately. That's why the 60.5 and 63 are different. But we haven't submitted that for permit yet anyway. It's really just to show you that that was the location of the system.
But it's one of the biggest decisions, right? This drainage pipe can be moved anywhere, right? That's not perforated pipe, it's solid.
Yep.
That may be shifted. We don't need to worry about the 15-foot setback by Tom Jackson's side. We're already in it now, right? We could put the new house an inch off that property line, be less non-conforming. So without the variance is correct and the HHE 200 correct, we don't even know if this can be permitted where it's at, and a big part of our decision on the house location is the septic.
Exactly.
So I guess, I don't know, I don't want...
And it's also stated to be the primary concern.
Well, it is, yeah. I mean, there's no, it can't, anywhere else on the site, it makes those distances worse.
What other, what other sites did you consider when you looked at that?
Up the hill?
If you're saying that's the only one, what other ones did you look at?
They looked everywhere on the site. I mean, it was, it was a combination of proximity to the wells and soils.
Just a quick question. Where did Tommy drill his well, over by his new garage or...
Yeah.
In front, near that?
Yep. In fact, I pointed it out to some people when we were there on site.
So that's got to be close then, because that garage is pretty close to the sidewalk.
If you measure out 100 feet on here, you're well into his property.
Well...
I'm not saying there's a better location for the disposal field.
No.
And we don't even know the LPI is going to approve these variances, for one. They're incorrect and they're not complete. So with that alone...
Do we have any idea, and Will, you maybe, what the likelihood is? I mean, I was concerned that it was being proposed 60 feet rather than 100. I mean, so 40% decrease in distance. And does the state normally approve that much of a change?
They do when you've got an existing system that's already there.
But we didn't know, but this isn't going to be in the same place, right?
No, no, it's further from the lake, so it's more in compliance with the lake setback.
Yep.
Less in compliance with the well setback. But yeah, typically they're going to, especially with the pretreatment, because this is going to be so much of a better situation than what's there.
But it is a pretreatment, because the site evaluator didn't check it, didn't put pretreatment anywhere on here. So you...
Yeah, I, I know it's going to be, yes, which is why we've labeled it that way on the site plan. I mean, I would suggest that if everybody gets to the point where they're in agreement that if this system is approved, that it could be a condition of the approval, that it's moved to the greatest practical extent pending state and LPI approval of the septic system.
But we need to know where Jackson's well is. We need the variances correct, right? We're not even asking for...
But the only thing the zoning board is looking at is are we moving it back to the greatest practical extent?
Right, but we're basing that off the location of this septic, this proposed septic.
Well, but you can, you can find, you can tell that there's probably no other, I mean, he suggests there's no other place you could put it, so even if he...
Yeah, but if an LPI doesn't approve a 60-foot setback to neighbor's well for some reason...
Fine, then it's not going to go through.
Right.
You can't build. So it doesn't matter what we say, I mean, we could approve it, and if you can't get the permits, you can't get the permits.
Right, that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying the towns of your approval could be contingent upon...
Right.
Yeah.
But the reason for that condition needs to be the distances.
Right, right, and correct, yeah.
If there is no other place to put the septic.
Right.
And we tried multiple site evaluators, too. We didn't, I mean, we tried everything we could, because the further back we got it, the better it was for the project, right? But because, partly because of the drainage, the soils aren't very good. It's very wet.
Further up, it's wetter?
It is, well, it is if you go further up and towards the culvert. If you go further up and away from the culvert, then you're getting closer to the well. Both this property's well and the neighbor's well. So we, we got, and Tommy's well wasn't there...
Right.
...when we did the work, so...
Yeah, I understand that.
That just showed up. So that added even more complexity. So now we have three wells that are all less than 100 feet from the septic system. And the septic system is about, what, 75 feet from the pond, whereas currently it's well within 75.
Field is about 75 feet?
Yeah, the 75-foot line kind of curves right through the bottom half of the system.
Yep.
I got another question, unless anybody else wants to go?
No, I can hold mine, I've got more.
So with my measurements on that, with the disposal field as it is, if it went down to a 10-foot setback, I still show that this structure could go back 17 feet, not impede the drainage, any side setbacks, and now we're 44 feet from the resource, not 27.
So Matt, moving this way?
Just move the house back, which is, I mean, it's, right, we're trying to figure out the most practical extent here. We could go back 17 feet without any modifications to the disposal field.
So the side setbacks and everything are still fine?
We would actually still be outside the 15s? The drainage ditch wouldn't be affected at all?
Well, the setback from the septic system to the foundation is 20 feet.
Well, it can be dropped to 10, though. Yeah, I probably should have said that.
Well, I mean, the standards are 20, I mean...
Yep, and it can be dropped to 10.
But then where are you proposing the field go?
Right where it is. I'm saying there's room to move this house back, still not go outside the 15-foot side setbacks, not move any of the pipe, or not move the disposal field or anything. There is room to move this house back.
But why would you do that? I mean, not that your argument was about the location of the drainage field and the wells, now you're just talking about moving the house back. Is that to make it less non-conforming?
Right, that's the reason we're here.
That's the point.
That's the whole reason we're here.
It's less non-conforming than it was.
Right, it's to the greatest practical extent. That's what we're here for.
So the problem with that, though, is that we have a height issue. So if we slide it back...
Yeah, you got like four feet elevation there?
Yeah.
So that's the swale, that's why I'm asking the question.
Right, well, we definitely want to keep a swale, right, because the grade is higher in the proposed situation than existing because of the septic system. And if we slide the building back any further, then we've got a height compliance with our ridge, because the existing ground doesn't change very much, but the new elevation does.
How, how much does it? In other words, would you be in violation at the height?
Yes, yes.
By...
I don't remember now. I know we, we had it right to the limit.
Where it's sitting it is?
Right. So if we slide it back, the house has to go up. We can't leave it at the elevation it's at and slide it back, because then we're too low, and we have a drainage issue, and we have a four-to-one side slope issue.
What is the height for that zone, 34?
I think we were matching the existing, weren't we?
So the 25 feet is the height of the existing, from mean original grade to the height of the existing, we're 25 feet from the new mean grade to the...
So the original grade would be from the back of the house or the higher?
No, it's all the way around. Every 10 feet, all the way around.
Okay.
So the actual height of the house is the same, it's just moved to a higher ground? Is that what you're saying?
Right, the difference between mean original grade and the ridge is the same as what it is now. The problem with sliding it back further is that the existing ground elevation doesn't change very much, but the proposed elevation has to be higher to accommodate the septic system.
So you all are much more experienced with this than I am. Is there a trade-off there? I mean, is it possible? I mean, can you accept a higher elevation in order to get it further from the resource?
Well, then we'd be in violation of the height.
Right.
So we have to be met setbacks heights and all that have to be met still. So there's no... All right, so that has priority over moving it back from the resource?
Right.
Okay.
And there has to be some consideration given to the septic treatment. Even a pump system, you don't want, you don't want the septic system higher than the foundation.
Well, it is.
It is.
It already is.
The bottom of the septic.
Right, the bottom of the septic system is, it's still, it's still higher than the first floor, which is partly why I don't want to get any closer.
Okay. John?
My reading is right, then, the back wall of the existing cottage, is it 154.1? That's the elevation? Is that what that is, on the corner of the, I'm on, right here? I'm on the existing. And so, but it only goes up to 152, so actually it's down, right here, the elevation. I'll try to read it.
The existing grade, right, but look, if you look at the proposed, once we put the septic system here...
Yep.
And he's breaking the law. So there's 152.
So you're actually going to fill this and...
We have to fill it.
Okay.
Because the soil's not good enough to set the system to be grounded anymore.
You're using those back, cube things, right? What are they called?
Algenind, right, yeah.
Which is the lowest profile we can do.
Okay.
Will, what is, you said in your narrative that the square footage of the proposed is less than the square footage of the existing.
Correct.
So can you tell me what the proposed square footage is?
Yep, the proposed is 4,115 square feet, and the existing is 4,162.
Of both cottages?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what prompted the question for me was part of the written narrative.
Wait, is that right? I'm looking, look, this is...
That didn't sound right.
No, no, I was looking at the lot coverage. It's, it's, currently it's 1729, and the proposed is 1497. That's what I see. So it's about 230 square feet.
Now, without the deck, right?
No, that includes the decks.
At 14?
Yes.
Okay.
So in the narrative, it indicated that 16,204 square feet are buildable, 1,924 square feet. You end up, you do the math, with 240 square feet is available and buildable for house. And I'm going back to the original application...
So the lot area of the parcel is 16,204 square feet.
And the buildable amount was said to be 1,924 square feet, right?
When you say buildable amount, I'm not...
That's language from your application.
Oh, the buildable area that's with, that is within the 100-foot setback, right, is only 19...
The municipal side yard and road setback is 1,924 square feet. Of the buildable area, 1,684 square feet is wooded.
Right.
That leaves 200 and some square feet.
Right, right, right.
So, help me understand, because you're also concerned about preserving trees. That means you're going into the wooded area?
No, we're not.
Okay.
No, we're not going into, the only tree that is going to have to come down is that one big 24-inch oak where the septic system is going to go. The rest of the trees are intended to stay. So all that vegetation between Beauclair and the septic system will remain.
So it wasn't so much the trees then? In other words, if the septic system wasn't a problem, then you could move it back and remove a few more trees? But you're, what you've just said is that the septic can't move.
The septic can't, correct.
So whether you saved or didn't save the trees wouldn't matter? In other words, the trees aren't in your way?
Not the way we proposed it, correct.
Okay. So the related question is, other than the 24-inch oak, what other vegetation has to be removed? You said no other trees, but there are other kinds of vegetation.
Yeah, I mean, I don't remember exactly if there was landscaping around the perimeter of the house. I mean, anything that's adjacent to the house is going to have to go and be replanted.
It's just grass around the house for the most part. Try to preserve everything that's uphill as much as possible.
Right, but you included a number of pictures. Oh, to the rear of the lot? Yeah. Pictures five, six, seven, eight, nine, most of those are trees.
Yep.
But mostly five and six. They're not labeled as anything. Can you tell us what those are of?
Yeah, those are just photos looking back from the septic system up towards the road.
Okay.
And so those, that's the area that we're proposing not to touch.
So there'll be, none of that vegetation would be touched?
No.
Okay. Just, it would be helpful to have pictures like that labeled, not just numbered in the future.
Yep, understood, yep.
It would be a lot easier to make sense of some of the narrative. Other questions from the board? Still not seeing any from the board.
Yeah, I've got a question about the new well. Are there setbacks for a well on property? You couldn't, because the well on the property to the north, that's going to give a problem to the, to the septic situation. And your new well proposed up there in the corner, you couldn't move that any further towards the, either the setbacks, the foundations could do. Would that help us, is all I'm saying?
No, because the, it's the neighbor's well that is controlling, it's closer. We've moved this...
That's my thought, okay.
Yeah.
That answers it.
And then I'd prefer not to put it in the driveway.
No, I understand, I'm just curious.
Really?
Hey, I've seen them inside buildings, actually, but, yeah.
So a secondary question. The existing sewage treatment, or whatever you want to call it, on the property, it's not, it's not on the, on the map, is it? Are you not quite sure where it is?
We're not quite sure where it is. I think when we were there the other day, everybody was thinking that it's probably over on the side, on the northern side of the house.
Right, right. So it would be your, your, your opinion is that what you're doing now with the new proposed system, it's going to be much better than what they had before, but you can't quantify that, because you really don't know what it had before, except that it's old and probably lousy.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I can't imagine that what's there is a great situation.
Probably oak planks.
Yeah, it could be. I mean, it could be just running into the ground.
Yeah.
So if I can recap one of these things, that the slope of the land, given what you said about the height of the building, is a limiting factor.
It is, and if you look at, if you look at photo, a good example is, if you look at photo, photo, picture two.
Yep.
You can kind of see that the building is setting in, there's a plateau that, that's above it, where the septic system is going to go, and then a slope down to where the building is.
Is one of these posts that you can see in the photograph, does that represent where the septic system or something else is going?
Yes, yep. So that's where the septic is going, right, right at the, at the crest of that little slope.
Those two posts that are in the foreground?
I think so. We had a lot of stakes out there showing setbacks and all kinds of things. But anyway, the point is that, that you can see the ground is low, and so, and where the septic system is going to go on that knoll, the elevation is coming up a couple feet. And so as we slide the building back, we don't gain much in the average original grade very quickly, and we have to bring the ground up. So that's what I'm saying, is that it would mean that we would have to raise the floor elevation more than what the mean original grade is, is climbing. So we would lose the, the building height quickly. But if the natural ground climbed at the same rate, if we weren't having to fill behind the building, then we could move it back more and just raise it at the same time. The whole thing could come back and up. But because of the way the definition is, it's, it's the existing ground that you start from, it, we have to keep the building at the elevation that it's at. And so if we slide back anymore, then we really are starting to have a drainage issue, because we're just over 20 feet to the septic system and the ground's going up.
What's the foundation, the proposed foundation?
A frost wall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like four foot, three foot?
Yeah, Frost.
Yep.
Yep. One of my favorite questions is about the disturbance of the area and preventing any huge amount of erosion. And you're going to take two buildings down, put in the Frost Wall, and construct a whole new building. What kind of equipment and where is it going to be positioned?
Well, there will, there will definitely be some sizable excavators that'll come in to do that demolition.
Tracks. Track machine.
I expect there would be track machines, yeah.
I would think so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a huge slope, but you wouldn't want to be wrong.
Mm-hmm.
And so it'll come in off of the road, so through the back line of the property?
Down the driveway.
Down the driveway.
Down the driveway.
Okay. And trucks?
Wheels.
Same thing.
Okay.
Yep, they'll back down, they'll get loaded and go, and then new material will be brought in the same way.
Not to compare, but Tommy Jackson, next door, probably moved twice as much material as his new well. Right. But I mean, if you look at what was accomplished next door, if that same method of operation was used, the impact would be pretty rough.
I mean, they're definitely going to need to put in, you know, erosion control and...
Oh, yeah.
Assume so. That's somebody else's worry, though, right?
Yes.
Must have a PBR control.
Yeah, I think I mentioned it before last time, so we've submitted the PBR, but they're holding on it until this decision is...
Oh, really?
Yeah, it says right under the PBR standards that if you're in the shoreline zone...
We're the first block.
Yeah.
Yeah, but when we fall down, the rest of them can operate.
So we get this approval, submit it to them, then they approve, and then we go back to the town for the, for the final. So it's, it's town, state, town.
Is this what they're looking at right now, what's on this proposal, or is it changed from this?
Nope, the DEP has this plan.
Has this plan?
Mm-hmm.
So where is the new well?
The new well that we're proposing?
Right.
It's right up at the intersection of the driveway and the parking.
It's where?
By your pan.
Not by the street?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, it's right here, it's marked as a W, right?
I was looking for it.
There's the neighbor's well, and Tommy's is right about here.
Yep. So it's pretty tight. Probably the same vein, too, they're all...
Yeah.
Yeah, you get to turn your water on first in the morning.
If it gets any drier, you will.
Keep sucking out of the lake.
That's what they used to do.
I think that's what's happening now, here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good backup.
Other questions from the board? John?
I'm thinking.
You're thinking, okay.
My wheels are turning in my little brain.
I thought I saw them.
Yeah, thanks.
Jim, Matt?
I'm still thinking, John.
The only question I had is about the, the septic system, and I've heard, I'm not particularly happy with the bottom of the septic system being higher than the Frost Wall, but there are conditions that make that happen, so...
Do those conditions make it work? Do those conditions make it work?
Oh, yeah, there's a number of them around town that are working. And it depends on the soil that they bring in and the swale that they make around the back of the house that makes it all handles the surface water and handles any escaping subsurface water.
And the materials needed to do that properly are well-known?
Yes.
And likely to occur?
And, and well available here in Knox County.
Depending on the type of treatment tank they put in, you can drink the water coming out of it.
That's right.
Really?
Before it even hits that disposal field.
With treated with what?
There's ultraviolet lights in there, there's chemicals.
So it's, it's like a little treatment plant before it goes into the ground.
This happens in the, in the tank?
Yep.
And then clean water goes up the hill?
Essentially, yeah. They say it's safe for human consumption.
But it has chemicals in it?
It's been treated, it's ultraviolet light.
Well, ultraviolet light is fine, it's the chemicals.
Yeah.
But I'm not gonna drink it, so I'm not worried about it.
By the time it gets up to that disposal field, and then that does its thing, it's
Half of the city of Los Angeles is drinking that type of water.
And glad they have it.
How much do you plan on raising above the septic field?
The ground?
Up two, three feet or?
Um.
That's right.
I was looking at it. It's 152 on the proposed.
Right. Yeah, so it's about two feet.
Yep.
Okay, so that's the finished grade you're looking at?
Yeah, the contours that we're showing on here are based on the HHE 200. And so it's on the downhill side, it's, it's about two feet where the shoulder is, and then it starts at a four to one going down.
This still bothers me a little bit, too, this
What's that?
This drain. It just seems like we're putting ourselves in a position down the road for the town, because do they have easement or something?
No.
I looked into that just a little bit. That cross culvert predates any easement. It's been there since before the road was paved.
Grandfathered thing?
Gotta be.
Yeah. But that's, but the reason, the reason I put the pipe in, though, was to keep that water away from the septic.
Away from the
Well, I understand that, why you're doing it. I just find it interesting that town has got more involvement in that part of it. But because it's grandfathered, whatever, hey, mine.
Don't, don't, don't kick a sleeping dog. That's Public Works motto, right there.
I know that, but it's been in the past that we've always liked to control a lot of runoff.
Well, that's right. And there should be a legal printed easement with some responsibility for maintenance for the town, but it's not. And it's grandfathered, so.
So if, if there are maintenance problems, it's up to the landowner to take care of? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I think if there was like a blockage at the outlet of that culvert, I'm quite sure that if you called the town, the Public Works would deal with it.
Yeah, but they had to move equipment down onto the property. They need to have the right to go down there.
We're opening a can of worms. I've been in a lot of times.
I know that.
So is that your sleeping dog, you know?
That's right. If it works, and if they're gonna improve it, let's hope that it works better.
Yeah, I just don't like to, I don't like making something, though, down the road.
That's right. Well, some smart lawyer's gonna come back and say, "Oh, by the way, you can't drain public water on private land." And then the town's lawyer's gonna have to say, "Oh, but we're grandfathered," and then the fight begins. I mean, I've experienced that.
It's a battle we chose not to take.
That's right. Don't kick a sleeping dog.
Who wins in those battles, Steve?
Nobody.
Well, John was right. Nobody, but typically in this day and age, you go to a land variance court, the property owner will wind up winning, the town will wind up being, that's what I've
So basement floor is above that 144?
Well, there's no basement.
Oh, it's just a
It's just a frost wall. Just a frost wall.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he's talking about a swale to sheer things away.
Yep.
Don't kick a sleeping dog.
Yep.
Good.
Other questions?
No.
Okay, there's still no public. So I guess without further questions, we can close the public hearing and move on to findings of fact. And so, just because we haven't done this a lot, just a reminder that we have to make specific findings on each standard. In the findings, we need to reference the source of information that we are relying on. Testimony of the planner for the applicant, evidence presented by either one, and any testimony, should we have it, from members of the public, but of course, we don't. If the standard doesn't apply to the application, we can find that it is not applicable, but we have to say why. And motions have to be positive, which we know. And if a single item fails to gain approval of at least three of us, we have to continue the review. Is that right? We have to continue? No. I don't, I don't, I don't know. It's something I got from your office, so. Anyway, forget that. We have to have at least three positive votes, correct? To pass. So forget the second half of that. Okay, so to begin this, would a member make a motion to find as a fact that the applicant's property is located where it is and cite what reference is being used?
I'll make a motion to find as a fact that the applicant's property is located at 193 Boca Avenue, is shown on Tax Map 103 as Block 16 in the Rule 1 District, RU 1.
Second of the motion?
Sorry.
All in favor? Motion passes. Would someone, either John or someone else, like to find as a fact that the existing structures as described as legally non-conforming in the shoreline zone are located entirely within the 75-foot shoreline setback from the McGunta Cook Lake?
I'll make motion to find as a fact that the existing structure, one primary and the other accessory, are described as legally non-conforming structures of the shoreline and are located entirely within the 75-foot setback from McGunta Cook Lake.
Second?
Second.
Favor? Five, nothing. And then finally, to find as a fact, we need a motion that the application, the purpose of the application is for permission, going back to what Will said. All right, to reconstruct an existing non-conforming structure within the shoreline zoning setback of McGunta Cook Lake. We, the zoning board, is granted the authority to hear this by Article 6, Nonconformance, Section 6, 66, Changes in Nonconforming Structures in Shoreland. So would someone make that motion?
I know what you said, but I'm thinking
Well, I do have a question.
Say it. Go ahead. I mean, I do. I just
This would be possibly conditional?
Could be.
You make the motion.
But it's finding as a fact that the application is for permission. It is not about approval.
Okay.
It's just when it is for work.
I, I would, I would move that we agree with this wording right here. Do you want me to read it?
Please. Sure.
To find as a fact that the application of property owner Elizabeth A. Simamaya is for permission to reconstruct an existing non-conforming structure within the shoreline zoning setback of McGunta Cook Lake. The CBA is granted the authority to hear this request by Article 6, Nonconformance, Section 6, Section 66, Change in Nonconforming Structures to the Shoreland.
I'll second it.
All in favor? You still have a question about it, John?
Yeah, I do. I wanna know where this fits in. I mean, that's raised some good concerns about the septic and everything else, but we don't know what the septic's gonna do to the DEA, or DEP, or DPA, whoever is looking at it.
But don't we have to allow code people to make that judgment? This would be conditional on their approval, right?
We're approving the setback for the zoning.
No, all we're doing here is approving it. It's stating as a fact what the application is for.
But the end result is supposed to be
We haven't gotten there yet.
I know. That's why I'm asking now, before we lead up to that.
Well, we'll get to that.
I know.
Did you vote on this one?
Not yet.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So. All right, now, we have to go through the one, two, three, six. The same things mostly we've talked about to address conditions. And these are about trying to determine whether things like size of the lot, slope of the land, either inhibit, prevent, or allow movement of the proposed structure to another location. So is that clear? That's what we're doing? Sorry.
I'm listening.
Okay, so the first of these is size of the lot. So does the size of the lot, as we've discussed, allow it to be moved, make it difficult, or allow it to be moved or not? Is it a factor in reaching the conclusion that it's where they present it, they wanna put it, is as far back from the resource as is practicable?
Well, that's, that's not the same. There are several questions in there. One is the size of the lot. We know it's non-conforming, and, and the goal is to make it less non-conforming. So the size of the lot's already, already busted.
But it's part of the ordinance to consider that factor?
No, I, I get it, but, but this is about it being as far as practicable. That's a different sentence. Basically, the size of the lot's non-conforming. The new, the, the old structures were non-conforming. The new ones can be non-conforming. If you wanna say that part of the motion is that it's as least non-conforming as possible, or whatever the language is, then we can, we can stipulate that, but I don't think that's what you're saying.
Well, let me try to restate it. My understanding is what we wanna look at is is the size of the lot a factor in whether they can move it back or not? Just the size of the lot?
No, no, it isn't.
As the plan is presented, it is not, in my mind.
Correct. Okay, so.
So.
And we're gonna go through these, but then we'll have to do a summary, is that correct? Or do you wanna vote on each of these as we go through it, Jim?
We have to vote.
Each one, if you'd like to go through that way.
Okay, so. But the size might be easier to
The size of the lot is, it's got some somewhat of an impact, because it's narrower as, in the, as you go to the rear and the setback.
The shape of the lot.
Yeah, exactly. The shape, size, whatever, but that's, right, the shape of the lot does, but it is a non-conforming lot, like Jim said. It's not conforming, legal non-conforming.
But to go any further back, you're not gonna meet the setback requirements.
Right, you're gonna violate those, so it has some impact on them being able to move it back.
I mean, if this lot was four times the size, then we could probably move it back. So the size of the lot does have an impact on, on what our options are. I think that's what the ordinance is getting at, right? Because this lot is so small and the shape of it and all the other characteristics, it leaves us with few options.
Okay.
So I, I do think that the size of the lot is
So the size and the shape of the lot limit the options for the placement, so it does have an impact. That's the motion.
Okay, well, I'll stick with that. Now, I have another question, but
Yep, go ahead.
It's further down. We'll wait for it to come up.
Okay, so another one of these little bullets?
Yes, it is. But I'll make the motion that the
Does that make
Lot is
Going back and restating it, that the size and shape of the lot do have an impact on where the new structure
Well, they do for the setbacks at this time.
Okay, so size, shape, and setbacks, right?
Yes.
Is there a second? And all in favor? Four. Four. So, Matt, can you tell us what the reason is for not agreeing? We're a small enough group that it would be good to know. What are we missing?
The location of the disposal field is what's driving this whole thing.
Well, that's
We have room. We have room. The southern setback doesn't even, I don't wanna say it doesn't matter. That doesn't even matter tonight. Right? There is room. That's just my opinion.
No, and I understand that those two can come together. In other words, Will's point that if the, if the lot were four times as big, no matter where the septic was,
Right, of course.
It probably wouldn't. But because the size and the shape, and we'll get to the septic, there is an impact on where it can go. I mean, with no septic system, there wouldn't be a problem. Is that what you're saying?
Right, or, or a better area for, not even a better, alternate location or a different location.
Okay.
Sewer system.
Town sewer.
It's right up the road now to put it in.
It's actually on the, it's on the list. Boca Avenue.
All right, okay, thank you. That helps.
Yep.
But still, we have a vote four to one, correct?
This is a question.
Yes.
This is unusual, that we don't have the certification, or whatever you wanna say, from DEP or whoever the state agency is now, before we make our approvals. Right? I don't recall this.
Well, for the permit by rule, it's, it's one of the standards. They won't issue the, the PBR until they have proof that, that whichever board in the town, sometimes it's ZBA and sometimes it's Planning Board, approves the location.
But there's nothing to say that they're gonna approve what we technically approve.
Well, they're not looking at the same thing. All they need to know is that it's been approved by the town to be in the location we proposed. As soon as they know that, then they can approve the permit by rule. Then we need to submit the HHE 200 to both, well, to the town. It'll go to the state for approvals of the variances and, and everything else.
So if the state didn't approve it?
The septic system or the PBR? They're two different things.
What would happen?
We'd be dead in the water. We'd have to find another way to adjust.
There's a safety.
Well, there's the thing, right there. So it would come back to ZBA, because it
If we're changing the location different than what you've approved, we'd have to come back.
Still be a variance.
That's fine, all right.
Yep.
Okay, so four to zero, four to one. Okay. Slope of the land. Someone wanna make a motion whether that has an impact?
It does.
It does.
Okay.
I make a motion, it does.
Because of why does it have?
Why does it have? Because it's, it's controlling the ridge heights on the house. It's controlling where the, where the septic is going, because you're filling to make it a better, a better system, because you don't have, you said your soils were not what you needed in, right, in that area. So that, would that make sense or no?
Yeah, so two reasons that the slope makes the difference. So that's your motion?
Yes.
I second that.
All in favor? Five. The potential for soil erosion. Is that a limiting factor?
Well, let, let me just, let's clarify that. We're talking about everything done, finished, landscaped. They're talking about the finished product erosion.
That I don't know. Is that true?
We're not talking about construction erosion, because that's a completely different matter.
Because that's controlled by somebody else.
That's controlled by permitting. When they come in to do the permit, the soil erosion is
So is Steve's question, that's the question. In other words, when everything is done, is there a greater or less, or
Right. You can say, at the finished product, is there a potential?
As long as it meets the standards of the ordinance, downtown ordinance.
There's nothing you're planning to do that would increase the soil erosion.
No, not in this plan.
Not in this plan.
It looks like it's a better deal today, but
All right, so do we have a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Five to zero. The location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties. And that would be ours, the septic system in this property, and also wells, I assume, and also setbacks. And that would be our, the septic system in this property and also wells, I assume, and also setbacks. A structure cannot be moved to a non-conforming location with regard to property line setbacks or distances to other primary uses on the property. So the location of other structures on the property, is that a limiting factor?
Yes, it is, because it's telling where the house is gonna be, correct? Where the foundation, where the septic is going, where.
Yeah.
Makes them.
Well, the septic is the big one.
Right, that's the one that drives this whole thing.
That's right.
So a second to the motion? That it does have an impact, it has a limiting impact on the location of the new structure.
I would second that.
All in favor? Okay, five. The location, oh, there it is, the location of the septic system and other on-site soils suitable for septic systems. Two different related questions. We've already answered one of them.
Well, the soils would be addressed in the, according to the plan. I don't know how I should word it. I mean, the plan says that you're gonna, right? Well, you're gonna raise it up and then put in the soils necessary to make it a working septic system.
But the location of the septic system is also a limiting factor because of its distance from wells.
We've already said that about three times.
I know. Well, now we're very clear about it, right?
Going for four? Do I hear four?
So do we have a positively stated emotion?
Well.
Yeah, Matt?
What if Tom Jackson's well is less than 60 feet? If his well is 59 feet, can't even get a variance to go below 60.
Right.
The state plumbing inspector can't even go below 60.
But if that happens, then it doesn't matter what we would have decided, right? I mean, it would be helpful to know exactly where it is and whether it is under 60 feet.
We know where every other setback is, whether it's water on the lake, well.
Right.
Right, foundation. We know every other setback for where this disposal field is supposed to be, other than one well.
Right, but that well is still potentially a limiting factor. If it's 60 feet, you're still getting a variance. If it was gonna be 150 feet, then you're right, it wouldn't be.
So what was, what was the question, though? I guess maybe I heard you wrong.
It's the location of the septic system and the, and other on-site soils suitable for the septic system has a limiting factor, is a limit on where it can go?
It does, does have a limited factor as it is now.
Yeah, right.
But it's being addressed in the plan.
So I heard you wrong.
Yeah.
And it could, and it could be the limiting factor.
Right.
Based on the actual measurement, so.
The septic system.
Yeah.
Right. So it does, I mean, it's the major limiting factor, correct?
Yeah.
All in favor?
So I have a question for, I know we're out of water here a little bit. So.
What?
If Matt's correct, if they won't, they can't go, I don't know, so I'm just, I'm assuming you know more about it. If, if you blow the 60 feet, what do you do? Move the septic system over two feet to get your 60 feet?
That's what, yeah. But I, I know that it's not, it's, it's more than 60 feet.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that the other well is the closer one.
Okay.
Tommy's is, is right up here. It's, it's a little further than this one.
60 plus at least, right?
Right. I think, I think that's the one that's actually 63, and this one's 60.5.
Okay.
So I think when the reference on there to 63 is this one, and this one's, that's how close they are. I mean, and that's why the location of the septic system was, it can't slide much in any direction, because you get less than that 60 feet.
So Steve made the motion? No?
No.
No, Steve didn't.
I did not.
No.
No.
I think I just, I just.
Well, I kind of fumbled around with something.
I can make a motion that.
Well, I would just.
The location of the septic system. Finish the sentence, John.
Well, I already said it. It does, it, it's a whole thing. It's a whole game here. I mean, and whether or not.
It limits where.
It limits everything.
So that's the, that's the, that's the motion. Who wants to second it? Four seconds.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
You can have it.
Give it to Jim.
Jim owns that one.
All right, and the final. The final issue is the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation.
State that again, please.
The type and amount of vegetation to be removed, that they have to remove in order to accomplish the relocation that they're proposing.
Well, the only thing they showed before was some minor stuff around the house and that one tree.
Twenty-four inch oak.
Right. And I think, I think what this section is getting at is if we moved it back more than, if we could, in this case, we can't because of the septic system. But if the septic system wasn't the limiting factor, and we had to take five times as many trees, then you'd be able to consider that as a reason not to do it. In this case, we can anyway, but by keeping it the way we proposed it, we are minimizing the amount of tree removal. We're allowed, now we're able to keep that in tighter buffer between the septic system and the road.
Right, but to the extent that the vegetation, trees, and other are something that the ordinance cares about, whether you can or can't.
Right.
Doesn't mute the point of this.
Correct, correct.
And given that we're talking about a little bit around the current dwelling and the 24-inch oak, is that enough? I mean, is that presenting a limiting factor?
I don't believe it does, no.
I, I think the incidental is not even, because I mean, the shrubs, the bushes, weeds.
No, and they've said they're gonna replant anything that is removed.
Well, you have to buy a ruling, right?
The oak is something that you need to.
But it's still nice that they said it.
Yeah.
Definitely the oak is something you need to think about, but.
It's the, one of the biggest, if not the biggest tree on the property.
Yes, unfortunately, it is.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion?
Why are you looking at me?
Well, because you love making them, John.
I, I don't.
All right, somebody else want to make a motion?
Well, I mean, as far as, it does not, it has limited impact on the, on the project. And as long as they meet the ordinance, whatever required, I'm happy.
John's happy.
I agree.
So a second?
Steve's happy, too.
A second?
I second that.
All in favor? Okay.
The oak will eventually be a hazard to the building anyway.
So based on what we have just said and voted on, based on the findings of fact, we find, we have two options, that there is no other suitable location on this property to relocate the existing structure, or two, that there is another location that is suitable for relocating the structure further from the lake. I would entertain a motion along one of, or one of those. This will be our conclusion, then everyone can go home, I think. Especially Steve. See, I come on the clock, I mean, it's 6 o'clock. So are we ready to make a motion, concluding motion about our findings of fact?
Yes.
And that concluding motion would be what?
At the, what is presented to us today, it's in the place it can go. This is it.
The only place.
The only place. But there's a lot unknowns we don't know. But as, as I've been told, that if it does go a different way, we get it back anyway, correct? All right, so I'm okay with it.
Okay, so given the information we have been presented with, there is only one location, the one presented.
Right.
That is suitable.
Correct.
Is there a second? A second?
He's gonna vote no, which is okay.
I didn't say again. I was looking for my notes.
He's looking for something.
No, no, you guys keep.
We gotta make the motion first.
I thought he just.
He just made the motion.
Can you restate the motion?
Yeah, you made the motion.
Well, I'm saying that the information's highlighted tonight, that the finding fact that, that is saying the location of the property has got to go where it is now, existing on by the plan.
That there is no other suitable location of this property.
That's a wide open answer.
No, but we can make the motion and pass it, and, and if it gets kicked back, it's kicked back. And we'll have to find some other choice. But as far as, as far as we've been hearing today, most of us, perhaps less want, think that it's, that it's, it's the best they can do.
Well, it's just, it's based on the information we were given. It's not information we don't yet have.
Exactly.
It's not what we would prefer. It's, and if you're, if you don't agree with that, it would be helpful for us to know where the other suitable location is.
Well, you asked for a possibility, two motions. One, it's, you can't do any better than this. Or two, there's an alternate location.
Right.
We haven't been, we have not heard about an alternate location. We've heard of the absence of alternate locations. So we pass the motion, and, and down the road, it either makes the grade or not. Otherwise, we have to send the applicant home if we don't.
Steve and then John.
This is one of the few times that I've sat here that we have two or three relief valves that will ultimately decide or bring it back to us. Based on that, I would not look for an alternate location, because someone else may do that for us or may not do that for us. So based on that, when you ask for, to move forward, I would move forward on that because, only because there's at least three reviews that are gonna look at this beyond what we've done here tonight, okay? And if we don't do this tonight.
Right.
It's dead in the water. And there's no sense in going down, further down the road. So the poll's, if it, if it jam.
Right, and that's why it was important when we read the two choices, which is why I was pushing for, is there another possible location? And, no, I know, John, hold on. And, and I'm not picking on you, Matt. It's just, I'm not happy about the septic system either. That's the thing that popped up for me. But I don't know, given what we heard tonight, that they can move that in any way and stay within the other tolerances with wells and setbacks. So even though I don't like the decision, I, if I can't come up with some idea of why or where there's another suitable location, I don't see that there are grounds for voting no. That's, that's my, what I call logic.
So we don't have a motion yet, is that correct?
Well, we do. John had a motion. We're now discussing it.
Okay, good.
Usually you get a second before you discuss.
Thought you, thought you seconded it.
Yeah, you already.
All right, I, I seconded it.
Oh, okay.
So good, I just wanted to make sure the discussion is, yeah, I got it, so, yeah.
John?
Forgive me, Matt. I'm not trying to pick on you enough like that, because you know more about.
You're not gonna offend me at all.
No, I would like to know, because everything hinges on this septic system. And we, and there's so many unknowns, even though we have the known, that we have in the plan. The unknowns, when this goes to the state, when it comes back, they might say everything you pointed out was, was right. I don't say you're wrong. I just said I don't know.
Yep.
And so why did you come up with 17 feet? That's what I find interesting. You talked about going back.
I want the minimum setback allowed from foundation to a disposal field.
Okay.
And just use their own math, and there's 17 feet there.
Okay.
Without, without encroaching side setbacks, at 17 more feet away from the resource, not altering this disposal field at all. I did not consider this well, I'll admit that.
And the soils?
See, this is a pre-treatment system. I mean.
Well, I thought that, I mean, if, if that's a substantial point, then we ought to.
I'm not a site evaluator, but I probably approve at least 100 a year, HHE 200s. They put septics everywhere these days.
Regardless of soils.
They can find a place. They put concrete chambers under driveways. They, there's all kinds of options. So just for me personally, I'm only one of five, so it doesn't even matter. It sounds like you guys are on the same page. I'm not sold that that's the only location for the septic, and that that structure is as back as far as it can be.
But that, I mean, no, but, but you, you certainly know far more than I do.
If you look at the site plan, you come back 10 feet, you only gain a foot of elevation.
That was the other thing, was if you move back, it's only a foot and it would still be within the height restriction?
That I don't know. And I didn't consider this well either. I, I'll be honest, I overlooked, I didn't even think about redirecting the water around the structure.
Plus, they're gonna reshape for that new, new pipe for the drainage going down through there, right?
Right, but that can go anywhere.
Okay.
Right?
Because that's just a pipe, nothing else.
It's solid. It's watertight, soil tight.
So Steve, you're gonna say something more?
No, no, I'm taking this all in. My head's spinning, but.
I still think that we need to move this forward, but I think there's so many unknowns that we don't normally see. And I just didn't know that they said wait for us to approve it before they could look at it. But I'm fine with that.
But the additional approvals, will they have anything to say about your point about the soils and it doesn't really matter?
Oh, the DEP is gonna be erosion. It's, it's work within the 25-foot buffer, because putting this foundation in, you're gonna be right on the line. It's work within the 75. So that's the DEP, right? The LPI, of course, is the first level for the variances. And if they exceed what he can do, it goes to the state. So yes, there's two different, there could potentially be two different reviewers there. It'd be Clint and Brent Lawson. So I mean, there are.
But would they be concerned about whether or not it could move? Would they just?
One's main concern should be wells, property lines, setbacks, right? That should be, and if it exceeds what he can do, like I say, there's another level that can go further.
Right.
Okay.
And that's really a pretty good check valve.
Okay, so it is a check.
It is.
Okay. Not perfect, but a check.
It was never perfect.
This whole process is just, no, right.
Okay, I mean.
I think we beat this.
Yep.
The, you know, we.
Don't use that metaphor.
I didn't say a word. I just, anyway, I think we've definitely discussed it to those limits. And we're not gonna go, I don't think we're gonna go any further than what we are right now.
We don't have any more information to go.
No, we don't, exactly.
That's exactly right.
So.
Move the question.
Yes, indeed. Move it. Right to the center of the table, John.
No, I said.
All in favor? Move the question. Call the question. All in favor?
To move it ahead.
Four to one. Okay.
Yep.
So then we have the final one we gotta do?
Oh, the final motion? Oh, okay, yes. A final motion, based on our findings, to approve, disapprove, or approve the application with conditions, remember, there's the condition, for Elizabeth A. Simmermeyer to reconstruct a structure and foundation within the shoreline zone area at 193 BoCare Avenue.
I'm, do we approve?
With conditions.
With conditions.
And the condition?
Well.
No, we don't need to approve with conditions, because the conditions are gonna happen regardless of whether you say.
I'll take back the conditions for now. Because like I said, it's got three more reviews, two more reviews, so there should be more than adequate.
Right, but there weren't any conditions that we cared about that those additional reviews won't.
Correct.
Okay, I'm not gonna go down that road. That's fine. I'm good.
I have to ask.
Right.
All right, so a motion was made. Is there a second? I mean, the motion was made to approve.
Approve, right.
Flat. No conditions.
No conditions.
Is there a second? All in favor? You'll second it? Okay, we got two seconds. And in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay, so it's another four to one. All right, so the meeting is closed. Thank you all.
No, so do adjourn.
And you're on time. Oh, it's the same. Motion to adjourn. I hate Robert's rules.
Well, you, it was an interesting discussion tonight.
Yeah.
I'll give you that.
We got a lot done in an hour, though.
I know, but it was good. I mean, I learned a lot tonight. Thank you, Robert.
Appreciate your patience, Will. It gave me a headache.
Well, it's hard. I mean, because we can.